Go ahead. You ready? Go. Call the meeting of the City Council for order for Monday evening, June 22, 2015. Please stand as we salute our American flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in the heart. Good evening, councilors, good evening, guests to the hearing. President. Counselor Cruz.
Thank you. I'd just like to take a moment of personal privilege and like to ask for a moment of silence. The city of Brockton lost a great friend, a great Brocktonian, lifelong Brocktonian, Peter Janaris passed away this past weekend. He was a proud graduate of Brockton High, served the children of Abington for 35 years as a principal of the elementary school over there, and with his family ran the Brockton Cafe for generations and supported more nonprofit organizations through that than most of us will ever be involved with. Everywhere he went, and he was a world traveler, he talked of Brockton, and he's a great Brocktonian, and I'd like to have a moment of silence for him.
Thank you. May he rest in peace. Thank you. Counselor Sullivan.
Mr. Cruz said it all. Thank you, Mr. President.
You're welcome. And, councilors, I do want to also mention that Counselor Barnes contacted me earlier this evening and indicated that she was not feeling well, would not be present this evening, and Counselor Stewart had obligations at work. That being said, Mr. Clark, item number one.
We have the petition of Elrond Concito Body Shop for a Motor Vehicle Repair Mechanical Body Shop License located at 1,000 Montello Street, and City Clerk's Office, February 13, 2015. Hearing is signed for June 22, 2015. All the necessary paperwork is on file, and the fire department has no objections.
Time hasn't arrived to clear the hearing open. If there's anyone here in favor, please come forward and state your name and address to the clerk.
Hi, my name is Maria Bellin, representing Elrond Concito.
Thank you. Good evening. How are you?
All right.
And you're looking and applying for the mechanical body shop license at 1,000 Montello Street?
Yes.
Correct?
Yes.
Okay. Anything else you'd like to add?
No.
No? Anyone else here in favor?
The President.
Counselor Stedinsky.
Ma'am, we did not have a chance to discuss this. What days of the week is the intention of the owner to be open?
We plan to open on Monday through Saturday.
And the hours that he would like to operate?
Mondays through Friday from 8:00 to 5:00.
And Saturday?
Saturday from 8:00 to 12:00.
Okay. That would be a stipulation on time, and that would be what councilors agreeable with that?
Thank you, Counselor. Anyone else here in favor? If you want to come up and state your name and address to the clerk? Seeing none, I declare that part of the hearing closed. Anybody here in opposition? Please come forward and state your name and address to the clerk. In opposition to the petition? Seeing none, I declare that part of the hearing closed. The stipulation was the operational hours?
On days of the week to operate and time. 8:00 to 5:00 during the week, Monday through Friday, and 8:00 to 4:00 on Saturday.
12:00.
I'm sorry, 8:00 to noon on Saturday.
8:00 to noon on Saturday? Is it 8:00 to noon?
Yes, 8:00 to noon.
8:00 to noon on Saturday. All in favor of the stipulations? Opposed stipulations, past granting the license as stipulated, all in favor? Opposed, license has been granted. Thank you.
Thank you.
Petition of Extranet Systems aim for upgrades and modifications to 13 existing pole locations and distributed antenna systems for telecommunication wires and purchases.
Time hasn't arrived. I declare the hearing open. Somebody's here in favor, as they are? Please state your name and address to the clerk.
Yes, good evening, members of the City Council. My name is Keenan Brin. I'm with Network Building and Consulting. I'm the representative for Extranet Systems. I'm here tonight to discuss an application by Extranet, which you have in front of you, I believe.
I don't have it.
I'd just like to give you some background on the application. Back in 2008, Extranet Systems was granted permission to use the right-of-way in Brockton in 15 different locations. They went ahead and constructed this. These grants of easements have been in place for a number of years. The application here is looking to replace and modify 13 of these locations. So two will be untouched, and 13 would actually be modified. Before I discuss the technical merits of the application, I'd like to point out a few things. First of all, Extranet is a registered provider with the Department of Telecommunications and Cable. We have agreements in place with both Verizon Communications and National Grid to utilize the poles and rights-of-way. Extranet is a provider nationally of these types of systems. They also provide services for large venues, both indoors and outdoors. I think this would be a good example of what could be used for wireless communications that's aesthetically pleasing, utilizing the existing poles. And again, I'd like to highlight the fact that this is an existing system in place, and we'd just like to modify it per the plans that you may have in front of you. The actual project itself would include the modification to these 13 poles with the changes in the antennas themselves. I'd like to maybe just take a minute and introduce Paul Thurston. He's the Director of Engineering and Services for Extranet, and he can give you a quick synopsis of how the changes are going to be implemented and how these may affect the poles.
Very good. Just for record, because we don't have all the information in front of us as councilors, so I'm not sure where these 13 existing pole locations are, and maybe you might want to just indicate that to us since the...
These actual nodes are actually, I logged on the map I have here, these are various locations.
The locations that we have are 21 Hancock Street, 36 Echo Street, 52 Perkins Street, 29 Newbury Street, 124 Staff, 165 Court Street, 69 Huntington Street, 51 Rossiter Street, 65 Battle Street, 83 Herod Ave, 376 Center Street, 175 Marine Street, and 103 Wheeler Ave.
Okay, so they're just simple. What it is, is you're just replacing that particular pole, obviously, with...
More directly, the pole will remain. Some of the equipment will remain. We're actually going to modify what equipment is on that particular pole.
I understand. Great. Counselor Sullivan.
Through you.
Yes, Counselor.
Sir, is this... Could you... I used to work in the telecom industry. Is this point-to-point or point-to-multi-point technology? And is it a cellphone, or is it cable? What's the service provider?
Yeah, it would be a cellular service.
And is it point-to-point, node-to-node, or...
Yeah, I'm going to have maybe Paul just step in, and he can give you a quick synopsis of how the system's designed and how it works in Brockton.
Does anybody on the council have the application with them?
No.
No. My other question is, why aren't you doing all 15 if you're only doing 13 out of the 15?
Paul can give you a quick description of that. It has to do with the preference of the client.
Provider? Okay. Thank you. Thank you, Counselor. Counselor Dubois.
If you don't mind, I can wait until I see what this gentleman has to say, and maybe he'll answer my questions.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Hi, Paul Thurston, again, Director of Network Implementation and Engineering. I did the original build-out for Brockton. Originally, the 15 nodes, we call them, the telecommunication with the antennas on the utility poles, are spread out at the wireless carrier's desire for coverage capacity reasons to either download data so their users can obviously have seamless coverage for themselves. When this network was originally built, back then, it was for MetroPCS, who has now been acquired by T-Mobile, and their brand name is now called TMUS, T-M-U-S, for the joint company. The add for the additional equipment is actually for Verizon. It's a good thing. Big provider in the city throughout, have a lot of clients and carriers, and they're looking to get added to this network. So to answer the question, they have either other rooftops or other coverage areas that they wouldn't need to take all 15 locations, and they're only looking for 13, for which they've asked us to request from the city if they could attach to those existing locations their equipment so we can provide them service. Our hub is located at the Brockton Fairgrounds, where there is already an existing tower. We're not on the tower, we're just on a shelter at the base of the tower. The network is, again, a distributed antenna system. We call it DAS, and it's fiber backbone from the hub to each particular node, and then we backhaul it through. And they either can use it for capacity or coverage, all depending on how they want to use the equipment.
So basically, in short layman's terms, it's an upgrade to what's there, pretty much?
Pretty much, exactly.
Okay. Makes it simplified. And, councilors, everything is here on file right here. If anybody needs to see it, in the clerk's office. Counselor Sullivan, again.
Mr. President, I just had one follow-up, if I could.
Sure.
Sir, the city of Brockton acquired other Cobra Lights recently, a couple of years ago, actually. Do any of these poles actually have any of the assets of the city on them, or are they free of the Cobra Light?
I would have to check. Most of them may have some type of a street light. It seems like a lot of them do, but out of 15, you might have five that would have some type of a light assembly possibly on them. I don't know off the top of my head. I can't remember.
The actual upgrade is going to be at the tippy-top of the pole itself?
Well, yeah, we changed the antenna, which is already at the top of the pole, correct. And then at the comm space, we call it, is the actual equipment we mount on the side of the pole.
And it's just wired... Is it just wired down?
It's coaxial cable from the antenna to the equipment, and it's fiber to the actual radio itself.
And so if some of these poles did actually have the street light, the Cobra Light that Brockton owns now, this upgrade wouldn't impede it in any fashion, correct?
In no way whatsoever.
Because it's above it?
Correct.
Okay. All right. Thank you, gentlemen. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Counselor. Any other questions, councilors? Anybody else? And thank you, gentlemen, as well. Is there anybody else that needs to or wishes to be heard in favor of this particular modification to these poles? Anyone else that wants to be heard? I'm going to declare that part of the hearing closed. Anyone here in opposition? Is anyone here in opposition to...
Oh, I'm sorry. May I ask a question, even though I'm not in opposition?
Counselor Dubois.
I apologize.
That's okay.
I'm just wondering, do you pay taxes or anything on these installations?
Well, we certainly pay a lot. I don't sit on the contract side. That's a different group in Chicago. Our actually, our office is in Chicago. But we do... I don't think it's taxed. Then we pay fees to the city, actually.
Okay. Is there anyone you could, like, through the City Council President, give us a breakdown of how much you pay the city?
Would you happen to get that from Chicago? Do you have that?
I can get it.
He could get that for you, absolutely.
And you would be able to forward that to the clerk or to our City Council President? Thank you so much.
Thank you. Thank you, Counselor. No one else... Anyone else here in opposition, too? Seeing none, I declare the part of the hearing closed. I declare the hearing closed as well.
It looked like there's a gentleman in the back who's in opposition. He had his hand raised.
Okay. Come forward, please. I'll reopen that part of the hearing.
Yes, my name is Robert Wisgrider, a citizen of Brockton. I'm not in opposition or far. I just have a quick question to the engineer here. Does this in any way impede the AM signals in this area? Specifically, like 15 to 16?
Gentlemen, we have to answer that.
Absolutely not. They operate in their own FCC-regulated frequencies. It does not affect AM radio at all.
Very good. Thank you. You hear that answer, Ms. Lucetta? Okay. Very good. Again, we'll act on this at the end of the meeting. Thank you. Thank you both.
We have a report of the Real Estate Committee for its meeting of June 15, 2015.
Accepted and placed on file.
Order of the Finance Committee for its meeting of June 16, 2015.
Accepted and placed on file.
Communication from the Mayor providing commentary on the fiscal 16 budget.
Accepted and placed on file.
Communication from the CFO providing commentary on the fiscal 16 budget.
Accepted and placed on file.
We have a communication from the DPW Commissioner requesting that the City Council transfers $30,000 from Water Personal Service Account to Water Overtime Account in order to fund overtime expenses for the remainder of fiscal '15 for emergencies.
Accepted and placed on file.
Communication from the Mayor recommending the same.
Accepted and placed on file.
Communication from the CFO relative to the situation.
Accepted and placed on file.
And a communication from the Mayor stating he has applied for nine firefighter positions under the provisions of Federal Safer Grant. The grant, if received, would fund these positions for two years with no match. However, the grant requires the city commit to maintaining staff during the grant period.
Accepted and placed on file.
Communication from CFO in accordance with Section 5 of Chapter 324 of the Acts of 1990 certifying to propose no layoffs, no reduction, and current fire staff commitment to FEMA for the proposed safer grant, provided that if necessary, the city will fully utilize its unused levy capacity to do so. This is a conditional commitment to the nature of which should appear on the face of the council order if it is approved.
Accepted and placed on file. Counselor Denapoli.
Mr. President, thank you. I would like to make a motion to move item number 39 under the suspension of the rules and vote on this this evening. The Fire Chief is here, and Mr. Condon is here, and I believe earlier this week I sent out some information on this grant, and...
Second.
And the Fire Chief can explain it.
Motion's been made, and secondly, we take item number 39 out of order and suspend the rules and act on that this evening. All in favor? Opposed? Number 39, we will hear... Mr. Clark?
Resolve that the City Council shall notify the Branch Chief of the Assistance to Firefighters Branch of DHA FEMA that the city, if awarded a safer grant, will commit to maintain its firefighting staffing levels and incur no layoffs during the period of the grant. This is a conditional commitment, the nature of which should appear on the face of the council audit if it is approved.
And no councilors have any objections? Chief Williams is here if he wants to make a comment in regards to it, so we all have a clear understanding. Good evening, Chief.
Good evening, Mr. President. Good evening, councilors. This basically is a FEMA grant that we have applied for in the past, and unfortunately, we were never awarded that grant. But I guess what has happened in the past is that municipalities that have received the grant found out later on that their body, and Brockton will be the city council, did not approve the grant. So it kind of created a lot of red tape in that they had to go back and basically reevaluate communities and award these grants a second time. So the process that they've come up with to alleviate that problem is get a letter from the board or the body and get basically a yes vote ahead of time so that when the grants are awarded, if we're fortunate enough to receive the grant, we can proceed forward with it.
Very good. Thank you, Chief. Counselor Denapoli.
Fire Chief. Chief, good evening, and thank you for the good news when you called me the other day. Just explain to everybody exactly how many positions this will be, and it's a two-year hitch.
Correct.
And it's not matching, no matching grants for the city.
Yes.
But the city has to continue about maintaining the salaries and...
Yes. It's a nine-position grant that we've applied for, and basically what that entails is the first two years of salary for nine firefighters in the city of Brockton. We would have to find the money in our budget to outfit and equip these firefighters, but that's something that we feel comfortable we could do. But the base is their salary for two years. There's also a commitment in there that states that these nor any other firefighters can be laid off in that two-year period. So Chief Financial Officer Condon has agreed that we are in a state that he feels comfortable that we could commit to that.
You all set, Counselor?
No, thank you very much, Chief.
You're welcome.
On that note, I would like to make a motion to...
First, let me just take out the... There are a couple of the councilors. Counselor Cruz.
So I just want to make sure I understand. Chief, thanks for being here.
Sure.
So this is not... We're not getting this grant yet, but we're telling them that if they award it to us...
Correct. Yeah, these grants will most likely be awarded before the end of the summer, but there's no definite date yet.
And this is probably a question for through you, Mr. President, through our legislative council. We would still have to accept the grant officially. This is not accepting the grant, or is this telling... This vote is to accept the grant if it's given to us?
You're committing the city to what's...
With what's... Yeah, tonight. So, and you think by the end of the summer, we should know?
Yes, I'm hoping.
Okay, good. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselors, all set on that? Then the question's on adoption by a roll call vote. Mr. Clark, please call the roll. Azak.
Yes.
Cruz.
Yes.
Denapoli.
Yes.
Dubois.
Yes.
Ioneary.
Yes.
Monahan.
Yes.
Rodriguez.
Yes.
Stedinsky.
Yes.
Sullivan.
Yes.
Nine in the affirmative. And the order is adopted.
Mr. President, move for reconsideration. Hope it doesn't fail.
Second. Motion's been made, and secondly, for reconsideration. Hope it does not prevail. All in favor of reconsideration? All opposed? Reconsideration fails. Thank you. Thank you, Chief, as well. Congratulations. Thank you, Counselors. Mr. Clark?
An audit amending Chapter 27 of the revised audences of the city of Brockton be ordained by the City Council of Brockton as follows. Chapter 27 zoning hereby amended by adding the following new section, 27-32-100 after Section 27-3295 as follows. Section 27-32-100, C9 Resort Casino Oval A District, N. Council, March 23, 2015. Ready to refer the Standing Committee on Audience and Planning. N. Council, June 8, 2015. Counselor Cruz's motion to amend and was properly seconded, passed to a third reading and amended by a hand vote. The recommendation is favorable as amended.
The question's to be ordained as amended by a roll call vote. Mr. Clark, please call the roll. Azak.
Yes.
Cruz.
Yes.
Denapoli.
Yes.
Dubois.
Yes.
Ioneary.
Yes.
Monahan.
Yes.
Rodriguez.
Yes.
Stedinsky.
Yes.
Sullivan.
Yes.
Nine in the affirmative. And the ordinance is ordained.
Mr. President.
Counselor Dubois.
I would like to motion for reconsideration on number 13 in the hope that it does not prevail.
Second. Motion's been made, and secondly, on reconsideration. Hope it does not prevail on item number 13. All in favor of reconsideration? All opposed? Reconsideration fails.
An audit amended Chapter 23 of revised audences of the city of Brockton be ordained by the City Council of the city of Brockton as follows. Chapter 23, Section 30-F6, Water Consumption, N. Council, March 23, 2015.
Mr. President. So on the first one, it said water rates, but on our agenda, it says water consumption. And on this one, number 15, our agenda says water rates, and the reading was consumption. I only ask because I'm going to vote differently on each of these, so I just want to make sure that we're clear what we're voting on.
We're on number 15.
15 on our agenda says... The agenda I'm looking at says water rate increase. And 14 on the agenda I'm looking at says water consumption. So maybe there are two different agendas.
I believe you're correct there, Counselor.
Why don't we break for one minute?
Check a two-minute recess. Councilors, back in session, please. Councilors.
We got three, four, and two is six.
Counselors, what we're voting on now is the water rate increases. Mr. Clark.
This would be an audit amended Chapter 23 of revised audences of the city of Brockton be ordained by the City Council of the city of Brockton as follows. Chapter 23, Section 30-F6, Water Rate Increases, N. Council, May 11, 2015. Refer the Committee on Audience, N. Council, June 8, 2015. Counselor Denapoli motion to amend, properly seconded, passed to a third reading as amended by a hand vote. Recommendation is favorable as amended.
The question's to be ordained by a roll call vote. Mr. Clark, please call the roll. Azak.
No.
Cruz.
Yes.
Denapoli.
Yes.
Dubois.
No.
Ioneary.
No.
Monahan.
Yes.
Rodriguez.
No.
Sullivan.
No.
Three in the affirmative, five in the negative. The ordinance fails.
Order that the City Council hereby extends and expends the grant award in the amount of $10,000 from Mass Humanities to city of Brockton, supportive stride towards freedom to get a connect in Brockton's diversity by exploring our common ground. The grant is to be matched by at least $2,000 in cash and $9,900 in-kind services. The Mayor is authorized to execute any and all documents necessary to effectuate such grant. N. Council, May 26, 2015. Refer to the Standing Committee on Finance. That report is favorable as amended.
The question's on the amendment. All in favor of the amendment? All opposed? The amendment passes. Now the question's on adoption by a roll call vote. Mr. Clark, please call the roll. Azak.
Yes.
Cruz.
Yes.
Denapoli.
Yes.
Dubois.
Yes.
Ioneary.
Yes.
Monahan.
Yes.
Rodriguez.
Yes.
Sullivan.
Yes.
Nine in the affirmative. The order is adopted.
Order that the DPW Commissioner is authorized to issue one single-family home sewer connection for Lot 4 of Aim Street, Brockton, Book 44409, Page 103, owned by Dennis Morrissey Family RT, N. Council, May 26, 2015. Refer to the Standing Committee on Finance. That report is favorable.
The question's on adoption by a roll call vote. Mr. Clark, please call the roll. Azak.
Yes.
Cruz.
Yes.
Denapoli.
Yes.
Dubois.
Yes.
of $10,000 for mass humanities to city of Brockton supportive stride towards freedom to gather connect in Brockton's diversity by exploring our common ground. The grant is to be matched by at least 2,000 in cash and 9,900 in-kind services. The mayor is authorized to execute any and all documents necessary to effectuate such grant. N. Council, May 26, 2015. Refer the Standing Committee on Finance. That report is favorable as amended.
The question is on the amendment. All in favor of the amendment? All opposed? Amendment passes. Now the questions on adoption by a roll call vote. Mr. Clerk, please call the roll. Azak.
Yes.
Cruz.
Yes.
Denapoli.
Yes.
Dubois.
Yes.
Aineiri.
Yes.
Monahan.
Yes.
Rodriguez.
Yes.
Sullivan.
Yes.
Nine in the affirmative. The order is adopted.
Order that the DPW commissioner is authorized to issue one single-family home sewer connection for lot 4, Aim Street, Brockton, Book 44409, Page 103, owned by Dennis Morrissey Family RT, N. Council, May 26, 2015. Refer the Standing Committee on Finance. That report is favorable.
Questions on adoption by a roll call vote. Mr. Clerk, please call the roll. Azak.
Yes.
Cruz.
Yes.
Denapoli.
Yes.
Dubois.
Yes.
Aineiri.
Yes.
Monahan.
Yes.
Rodriguez.
Yes.
Stedinsky.
Yes.
Sullivan.
Yes.
Nine in the affirmative. The order is adopted.
I want to take 18 through collectively.
Mr. President?
I think it's 18 through 32.
230. Oh, I'm sorry, 232.
Counselor Dubois.
May I please, I would like to take, I would like to, what am I looking to do? I'm looking to, what is, what is the word? I'm looking to-
Collectively?
No. I'm still on 17, and I am looking to-
You buying tonight or something?
What is it? What did I just?
Move for reconsider-
Motion for reconsideration in the hope that it does not prevail. I'm sorry, it fell out of my head.
Been made in second for reconsideration, hopes it does not prevail on item number 17. All in favor of reconsideration? All opposed? Reconsideration fails.
Thank you. Sorry.
And we did-
Mr. President.
Counselor Sullivan. I'd like to take collectively all the revolving funds if I could, which would be, I believe, 18 through- 18 through number 32, I believe. Second. 32, correct. 18 through 13. Motion's been made in the second that we take items number 18 through 32. Those are the revolving accounts, which we do each and every year, and we'll take them collectively. Clerk?
Each of the following departments have requested revolving funds, and they have been record favorably. And number one would be the 2,000 reestablishment of the revolving fund for fiscal 2016 for the purpose of reimbursing departments, the auditus department, for not more than $10,000. The animal control revolving fund for not more than $5,000. The parking authority revolving, no more than $250,000. The cash receipts from Comcast distributing from the board and the cable board and the mayor, that the women's commission on receipts and donations for various events. The police chief ordinary maintenance expenses for not more than $35,000. The K-9 unit of the Brockton Police Department. Grave liners acquisition installation of grave liners exclusively of the cost of labor for repair and maintenance, $100,000. That would be the cemetery board of trustees. The account under the control of the mayor for the manning pool will not exceed $50,000. The 40R smart grant incentive revolving fund, as said repeat, for planning economic development. The revolving fund for the funding in connection with the demolition of buildings under the direction of the building superintendent. The revolving fund for the water memorial building under the direction of the mayor. The creation and maintenance of abandoned building registry, as well in closing and boarding up the vacant abandoned buildings, Brockton Building Commission, not to exceed $250,000. To keep Brockton beautiful by the commission of the DPW. The composting bid distribution, the DPW commission. These are all recommended favorably.
The question now is on adoption by a roll call vote. Mr. Clerk, please call the roll. Azak.
Yes.
Cruz.
Yes.
Denapoli.
Yes.
Dubois.
Yes.
Aineiri.
Yes.
Monahan.
Yes.
Rodriguez.
Yes.
Stedinsky.
Yes.
Sullivan.
Yes.
Nine in the affirmative. And the orders have been adopted.
We have the audit budget for fiscal 2016, N. Council, May 26, 2015. Renew for the Standing Committee on Finance. That report is favorable as amended.
The questions on adoption by a roll call vote. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Do the amendments.
Mr. President? Oh, I'm sorry. I'm sorry.
Don't we have to take the two different budgets or not?
He's going to do the first two amendments. Do the two amendments, then you take the other amendments. Okay. Any other, let me do the first two amendments here, correct? Okay. The question is on amending the budget by reducing the law department ordinary maintenance service by 100,000 from 562,477 to 462,477. All in favor of that amendment? Opposed? That amendment passes. We have, we also have the other amendment, amending the budget by reducing the DPW water commission desalination charges by 6,395,630 from 6,395,631 to $1. All in favor? Mr. President, we get a roll call? We can have a roll call on that? Mr. Clerk? Azak.
Yes.
Cruz.
No.
Denapoli.
Yes.
Dubois.
Yes.
Aineiri.
Yes.
Monahan.
No.
Rodriguez.
Yes.
Stedinsky.
Yes.
Sullivan.
Yes.
Seven in the affirmative, two in the negative. The amendment passes. Now, councilors, we'll go to any other amendments that you may have to offer this evening in regards to the budget for FY2016. Counselor Denapoli.
Mr. President? I hereby move from the mayor's office, personal services, the amount of $11,474, reduce from 493,664 to 482,190.
Second. Motion's been made in second that we're reducing that amount of money from the mayor's office. Roll call vote? Roll call, Mr. President. Azak.
No.
Cruz.
No.
Denapoli.
Yes.
Dubois.
Yes.
Aineiri.
No.
Monahan.
No.
Rodriguez.
No.
Stedinsky.
Yes.
Sullivan.
Yes.
Four in the affirmative, five in the negative. Does not pass. Does not pass. Any other amendments? Okay, if not, we will, we will now proceed to vote on the, on the budget, councilors. Okay. The question is, is first on the budget for DPW water enterprise for fiscal year 2016 by a roll call vote. Azak.
Yes.
Cruz.
Yes.
Denapoli.
Yes.
Aineiri.
Yes.
Monahan.
Yes.
Rodriguez.
Yes.
Sullivan.
Yes.
Seven in the affirmative. That part of the budget, DPW budget passes. The question is on the budget for personnel department for fiscal year 2016 by a roll call vote. Mr. Clerk? Azak.
Yes.
Cruz.
Yes.
Denapoli.
Yes.
Aineiri.
Yes.
Monahan.
Yes.
Rodriguez.
Yes.
Sullivan.
Yes.
Seven in the affirmative. That also passes. Now the question is on the budget for the fiscal year 2016 as amended. Mr. Clerk, please call the roll. Azak.
Yes.
Cruz.
Yes.
Denapoli.
No.
Dubois.
No.
Aineiri.
Yes.
Monahan.
Yes.
Rodriguez.
Yes.
Stedinsky.
Yes.
Sullivan.
Yes.
Nine in the affirmative. That also passes. Now the question is on the budget for the fiscal year 2016 as amended. Mr. Clerk, please call the roll. Azak.
Yes.
Cruz.
Yes.
Denapoli.
No.
Dubois.
No.
Aineiri.
Yes.
Monahan.
Yes.
Rodriguez.
Yes.
Stedinsky.
Yes.
Sullivan.
No.
Six in the affirmative, three in the negative. And the fiscal year budget for 2016 has passed.
We have number 34, I believe. Resolved that representative from American Response, AMR, be invited to appear before the finance committee to discuss their past practices and operational endeavors over the past 30 years servicing the city of Brockton, N. Council, June 8, 2015. Renew for the Standing Committee on Finance. That report is favorable.
Mr. President. Counselor Sullivan. Before we take a vote, I wanted to go on the record and thank you for your leadership last week. You gave some leniency. I think the three individuals that spoke from AMR spoke from the heart. They educated without question the bodies of this legislative branch. So I just want to thank you, and I want to thank the reps from AMR for being here. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, councilor. Appreciate that.
The question is on adoption by a roll call vote. Mr. Clerk, please call the roll. Azak.
Yes.
Cruz.
Yes.
Denapoli.
Yes.
Dubois.
Yes.
Aineiri.
Yes.
Monahan.
Yes.
Rodriguez.
Yes.
Stedinsky.
Yes.
Sullivan.
Yes.
Nine in the affirmative. The order is adopted.
Resolved-
Counselor Sullivan. Motion for reconsideration, hopes it does not prevail. Second. Motion made in second for reconsideration, hopes it does not prevail. All in favor of reconsideration? All opposed? Reconsideration fails.
Thank you.
Resolved that Mr. John Williams be invited to appear before the finance committee to discuss his educational mentoring program, Champion City, and to fully detail the success and proven benefits provided for student participants. N. Council, June 8, 2015. Refer the committee on finance. That report is favorable.
Questions on adoption by a roll call vote. Mr. Clerk, please call the roll. Azak.
Yes.
Cruz.
Yes.
Denapoli.
Yes.
Dubois.
Yes.
Aineiri.
Yes.
Monahan.
Yes.
Rodriguez.
Yes.
Stedinsky.
Yes.
Sullivan.
Yes.